This meeting of Norwood City Council was hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, man's dignity public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Here.
Mr. Blair.
Here.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sankar.
Here.
Mr. Mumper.
Do we have six members present? So we will proceed. We have two requests to amend the agenda. The first is a resolution adopting the 2018 tax budget and declaring an emergency that we would add under introductory readings of resolutions as Resolution Number One. And then a letter from Chief Wallace from the Norwood Fire Department regarding comments at the special council meeting that I would suggest we would move to Communication Number Five. And then move the letter from the Law Department regarding the executive session to Number Six. So that would be the last thing that we would consider. Mrs. Stickley.
I know that we moved the agenda as you just stated.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have the minutes of the June 27, 2017 meeting, which were distributed via email. Mr. Clark?
To approve the minutes as of right.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no request to address council. So we'll move on to reports of standing committees. The first is a committee of hold regarding financial recovery plan. Dated June 28, 2017, to the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your committee of hold to whom was referred the financial recovery plan, beg leave to submit the following report. Mayor Williams reviewed the steps that he has been reviewing, including looking at 911 Dispatch, retirees' health insurance, employees sharing healthcare costs, and contracts to look at complement, number of officers, and buybacks. Council members offered some additional suggestions of potential savings in the future during contract negotiations. The mayor will take these four listed items to the state auditors for the financial impact on the financial recovery plan. Council members requested a copy of the plan prior to the Wednesday meeting so that it can be studied before the vote. The mayor will ask that it be emailed to members on July 3. It is recommended that the financial recovery plan be approved at the July 5 special council meeting. Respectfully submitted, Donald Lake Chairperson, James Bonzal, Andrew Clark, Mrs. Stickley, Mr. Blair, Mrs. Hanahan, Mr. Sankar, and Mr. Mumper. Mr. Clark?
That the committee report be accepted.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to introductory reading of ordinances. We have one. It is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a property investment reimbursement agreement with TriHealth Inc. and declaring an emergency. Mr. Moore has a... I know the reason for this is that there were a couple of changes made to the exhibit, and Mr. Moore is prepared to discuss those. If you would like him to go over those prior to taking any action? Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, if Mr. Moore wouldn't mind just giving them a brief overview of how this came about.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. Council passed essentially this agreement, I don't know, a few months ago for TriHealth to move in and take over the ITT space and some other areas, bringing a whole bunch of new employees to the city of Norwood. They had a different group look at the agreement after it had been signed and council had passed it, and they had some changes that they're asking for. None of the changes affected the dollar amounts or the dates. And just to give you some highlights, there's some clarification on the square footage that would be occupied. There is changes to their contact information. It clarifies that the $2 million of the build-out cost of the space that they're taking, that the land... the property owner, the landlord, may cover some of that cost. It changes in the idea of using of... kind of giving a hard look or preference to city residents for new positions that they're filling, that they use best efforts as opposed... or they use good faith efforts as opposed to best efforts, which is not something we thought we really wanted to fight about. And it clarifies that the city's understanding that most of the employees that will move in are current TriHealth employees, and they're not just suddenly going to hire a whole bunch of new people. So when we look at the Norwood preference for new hires, we understand that most of the people are just moving into the city from other locations. I'm trying to think. There were...
But all of the employees are new to Norwood. They're not current employees who work in the city of Norwood?
Correct. As far as the tax credit goes, it's only for people that are... that will be new employees within the city of Norwood that we're moving in. They also specified the specific building that the billboard with it a billboard would go on, and they wanted to clarify that it might not say TriHealth. It might have another, you know, another corporate name or another affiliated company. It may be something other than TriHealth on the billboard that announces, that advertises their location. And those are essentially the changes. There are a few of the typos and some clarifications, but it really makes no difference to the substance of the agreement, which is they are moving a whole lot of employees here and taking up some empty space, and we are offering a tax credit in exchange for that, along with some guaranteed if they don't hit certain targets at five, 10, 15 years, then there are clawback provisions where we can get back any refunds that we've given them previously if they don't meet the employment targets, the tax revenue targets.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other discussion? What's your pleasure? Mr. Sankar?
I recommend we have all three readings of the ordinance, please.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a property investment reimbursement agreement with TriHealth Inc. and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a property investment reimbursement agreement with TriHealth Inc. and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a property investment reimbursement agreement with TriHealth Inc. and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, I recommend that the ordinance be passed, please.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank the Law Director for being here, and just considering that these are just minor changes to honestly a really great agreement, or really great things that see of Norwood. I'll be voting yes today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Move on to introductory readings of resolutions. We have the one which we added, a resolution adopting the 2018 tax budget and declaring an emergency. Mr. Sankar?
Yes, Madam President, I'd recommend that the resolution adopting the 2018 tax budget have all three readings, please.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Resolution adopting 2018 tax budget and declaring an emergency. Resolution adopting 2018 tax budget and declaring an emergency. Resolution adopting 2018 tax budget and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark?
That the resolution be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no administration reports nor requests to address council. Move on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Mr. Sankar?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to give a quick note of thanks to the Norwood Fireworks Committee for the day that they put on down at Water Works Park. And the display that was put on was very good as well, and it was the... the day was filled with festivities, and a lot of work comes together, and they start on this, you know, almost the week later for next year. But I would like to commend them for their efforts and the fine show that was put on. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Any other unfinished business? I'd like to report back that at the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission meeting on Thursday following our special meeting, the members of the committee got that report soon after. I emailed it out to the committee members, but I don't think some of them checked their email until the next morning. So they had gotten it in the morning, and our meeting was at 11:30. We were there for about two hours, went over it. Both of the financial supervisors gave almost a line-by-line report, certainly fund-by-fund report. And ultimately, it was decided that they would continue to review it and would vote on that, whether to adopt... to accept it or not at the July 24 Financial Planning and Supervision Commission at the next meeting. So just to report back to you, you did fulfill... I questioned, and they did confirm, that council fulfilled its legal obligation by passing it in time and getting it to the commission. So we did our job. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
Is there any other unfinished business? Move on to new business. Any new business? Mrs. Hanahan?
The Norwood Police Department is starting a new program that I'd like to tell you about. It's called NICE. And it's Norwood identifies citizen encounters. And I'll just read their little flyer here. Norwood Police are seeking your help in identifying citizens with autism or dementia Alzheimer's, promoting safe, positive encounters between the police and vulnerable families. If someone in your family has any of these identifiers, we would like to work with you to help make police encounters less stressful for your loved ones. This information will also assist police in locating a person that may be missing. Advanced information concerning an individual Norwood Police may need to engage with during an emergency or a simple routine encounter can provide a calmer, positive outcome. The forms are available on norwoodpolice.org. Also, they will have a booth at the Holy Trinity Festival and the First Responders Night. And I went with the chief to Colrain that they already have this program. It's been extremely successful. They have a binder. They have pictures of, you know, a person. You have somebody with Alzheimer's, or you have somebody even with autism. He's planning, or we're planning on, if this works out, to even further it for other disabilities. But having a first responder, the police walk into a home, knowing and having information about an individual is really going to be beneficial, and Colrain has been very successful with this program, and it was actually a police officer who brought the program to that. And one of the first members they have now work for the police department. So anytime you have, you know, good relations between the police and anyone, you know, it's a plus-plus for you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. And I... you sparked me. I apologize. I'm very sorry. I meant to have a moment of silence for Lucy Simpson. I totally apologize if we could do that now. Lucy Simpson was a founding member and a past president of the Norwood Historical Society. I know she was a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I think Mrs. Hanahan, she was a founding member of West Norwood Neighborhood Association. I found out just a little while... just shortly before the meeting that she passed away. And if we could, in her honor, please let's have a moment of silence now. Thank you. You talked about First Responders Night. Do you want to...
I don't have all the information.
July the 19th?
At Water Works.
At Water Works. I'm not certain of the time. Do you know? 6 to 9? So First Responder Night, kind of like National Night Out, but it's not on National Night Out. So First Responder Night, July 19 at Water Works from 6 to 9. I know the police department will have bicycle helmets to give out because I brought them to them, so... and I'm sure the fire department will be down there, all the first responders. They usually have folks from other communities come and take part in that, so it's just a good way for the community to come out and interact with all of our first responders. Yes, Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And just to follow up on that, they'll have door prizes, there'll be a reptile man, face painting, a dunking booth, and they're going to give a free bicycle to one boy and girl in attendance. So according to the police department, this is an event that you do not want to miss. It should be a fun night.
Any other new business? Yes, Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. So on, let's see here, July 23rd, so Sunday, July 23, at 7:00 p.m., there's going to be... the Cincinnati Shakespeare Company is going to perform a free performance in Upper... I think it's Upper Millcrest Park, yep. Again, 7:00 p.m. And so they're going to... there's a lady running for city council now that works there, and so I'm sure she had Maddie that had a part in this. But it's free, it's fun for all ages. Just bring a lawn chair, some blankets, and there's no tickets required. So just show up, July 23, Sunday, at Upper Millcrest Park, Shakespeare in the Park. And the show will be Mary Wives... Mary Wives of Windsor.
Fun. Thank you, Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other new business? Move on to communications. The first is a letter from Mr. John Shepherd regarding "Thank You."
Dear Mrs. Lake, thank you and your fellow members of the Norwood City Council for your resolution recognizing Shepherd Chemical for our contribution of trees on the occasion of our 100th year in Norwood. We are truly honored by the council's action, and Rick Towner and I were touched by and greatly appreciate the kind words that were spoken. The next day, Wednesday, happened to be our annual employee appreciation day, and Tom Shepherd used it to tell everyone in our company of the exceptionally nice tribute given to us by Norwood City Council. Norwood has now been our home for 101 years. We are glad of that, and we intend to be a good and contributing member of the community for many more. Sincerely, John Shepherd.
Mrs. Stickley?
Has the letter been received and filed?
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan. Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from the Ohio Liquor Control Board regarding a liquor license transfer from Monty's to Lateral Sports Bar, both at 4108 Montgomery Road. We were just informed by Mr. Moore that the earnings tax department has an objection since they have failed to... Mr. Moore, you want to explain?
We've just heard that the earnings tax department has some issues and would like us to object.
Object. Mr. Clark?
Clarification, if I could. So we just issue our objection, and you could send a letter on our behalf stating that we object? Is that how that works? Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. I think the letter actually comes from the clerk of council, and it's basically this form, and they check the box that says, "We do want a hearing, and we'd like it in the county seat," as opposed to in Columbus. And at that point, we'll have a chance to present the objections. We'll probably contact them to let them know. Here's the issue. Could you please take care of it?
Usually what happens is once they know that there's been objection, usually they come in and take care of that, and that's the reason for the objection, usually. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. So I would like to move that we ask the clerk of council to send this letter back asking for a hearing in our county seat.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from the Ohio Liquor Control Board regarding a new liquor license request for residents in... at Rookwood Exchange. There have been no objections back on this request. Mr. Bonzal?
So I don't see... I personally have looked over this. I don't see any objections myself. So I would like to ask that the clerk of council return this. I'd like to move that we ask the clerk of council to return this with no objections.
Seconded by Mrs. Stickley, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding mayor's court finds for June 2017.
Dear Madam President and members of council, in closing, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of June 2017. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Clark?
That the report be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Chief Wallace regarding comments during the special meeting.
Dear members of Norwood City Council, I attended the special council meeting last week where the financial recovery plan was presented to council for approval. A couple council members were not happy with the plan because they didn't believe there are enough cuts made to the fire department budget and stated they would like to see a 7 percent reduction. These comments upset me because as the chief of the Norwood Fire Department since July 13, 2016, I have seen a significant reduction in costs. These reductions were negotiated between Mayor Williams, Safety Director Gears, their negotiating team, and the Norwood Firefighters Union. These reductions saved the city a sizable amount of money. For example, the change in health insurance negotiated and approved by the city employees realized approximately a $600,000 savings. Another negotiated item was the reduction in fire department daily minimum manning that dropped from 13 firefighters on duty to 11 firefighters on duty. Let me be the first to say, as the fire chief, I was not in favor of this reduction, but I'm a realist, full well-knowing the current financial situation of the city forced reductions to be made. This reduction in minimum manning seems a less safe fire ground for the firefighters, but also for the citizens we serve. As a result of this reduction, the fire department command staff and I honed our current mutual aid policy, eliminating some of the response time barriers that existed, allowing for a quicker response of the mutual aid companies. My main reason for writing this letter is to address Mr. Bonzal's and Mrs. Hanahan's comments that they want to see an additional 7 percent reduced in the fire department. And the fire department personnel service is key. For the record, the reduction in minimum manning since July 9, 2016, and July 8, 2017, has been reduced from $149,838.84 to $13,735.88. This represents approximately a 91 reduction in overtime costs. In closing, I am asking the next time these council representatives decide to throw out arbitrary numbers, they should talk with the city administration and I to inform them on where cuts have already been made, the effects on those cuts on safety and service, and how additional cuts would negatively impact an already dangerous reduction. Respectfully, Ron Wallace, Fire Chief, Norwood Fire Department.
Mr. Bonzal?
I would like to move the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Mrs. Hanahan?
First of all, I'd like to thank Chief Wallace for his letter of concerns and add some things that I believe are misconceptions in his letter. Number one, at the last meeting, we discussed a reduction in the fire personnel costs. We did not discuss or recommend the entire fire department budget. Number two, the $600,000 insurance savings to the city was the result of all unions and every employee of this city, not just the fire department. Three, we did not arbitrarily throw out a number for this. And the numbers we talked about were off of forecasted numbers. The forecasted numbers on the budget were derived from many things, including history, past costs. And when we had $531,000 in fire department overtime in 2015, and around $250,000 in '16, it did, I am sure, affect the forecasts that we got for the future. We were working off the future forecast costs, which we felt should be adjusted considering that the overtime costs had been controlled this year. And I want to add that it was told to us at that time that this document will be changed many times, including the amount for the fire personnel. As we know, the city is at great risk at this time, and we can't consider... we can't continue on the same path. I completely support our fire department. I completely support our police, and I do believe we have two wonderful departments. That doesn't mean that I shouldn't be looking into cost, asking question, and looking what's best for this city. I'm going to ask questions. I'm not going to stop doing that. I am going to look into things. You know, and I would just like to say that I'm sure the fire chief looks into budgets, issues, and makes decisions that his men don't particularly like because that's his job. Well, it's the same with our job, sitting here on council. People don't like when we look into things or when we ask questions. And there was one part of this I did read, but I would like to say because this got on a Facebook page, and I passed it around, and there was a comment that we don't support our fire and police. And anybody who thinks that is wrong. And I would suggest, if you don't think we support our fire and police, you call the auditor's office. You ask them for numbers. You find out. You know, you will look at numbers of what our fire... what each individual fireman costs us. I am not judging it. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm not saying anything like that. I'm saying it's an expense, and you'll be surprised at what it costs us for each individual person. So that is what I would like to say, and I'm just sitting here, and I'm going to do what I feel is right. And I feel that these things need to be looked at, and I'm going to stand by that and say we need to look further into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Any other discussion? Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. So I also want to thank Chief Wallace for his letter to this body. As a firefighter, for I think 32 years in the city, he's the brother-in-law of a firefighter, the son of a former fire chief, and he's the uncle of a starring fire or police chief one day. I know that there's a lot of emotion that probably goes into just any decision that like really revolve around the fire department. The Wallace family has served the city for many years, and we definitely thank them for that dedication. And I personally think our chief does an excellent job. I hope he continues to serve as our chief for many years. But however, so we raised... the concerns that we raised and the issues that we raised were... it has nothing to do with whether we support our fire department and whether we not. It really has to do with, I mean, in my opinion, the future of the city. We have, you know, there's... we have so much deferred maintenance in our community. We have streets that need to be paved. We've got parks that just truly are not in the conditions that they need to be in. And frankly, we actually... our fire equipment is not in the greatest condition either. And so in this next five years, I'm hearing that there's going to need to be a ladder truck replaced. You know, I don't know if the costs are half a million or a million or what that might be, but we can't afford to buy these things and to do these things if we're spending as much as we are on personnel costs. And so what we asked to do last week was that we... or I guess I... both of us, we asked for the... a cut in the personnel costs for just the firefighters that include administration or administration, but we asked for a cut in personnel costs to put it into a placeholder into streets. And so we're not looking to spend that money. We're not looking to... I mean, whatever was going to happen in contract negotiations, we're going to happen. But we wanted to at least make sure that we sent a signal that this is not... we can't keep doing this. And my colleagues also, five of the seven people that are on council, agreed with the general concept that we... And so again, I just, I don't think this is going to be the last time that this gets brought up. I'm sure that the chief will also have more words for us, and I definitely welcome them. He's our top public, top fire safety official. I mean, he's definitely the expert here. But I also want to make sure, I mean, it's our collective role to maintain a watch over the city and the city's purse strings, and to ensure that we're able to serve the city as effectively as we can. So I think it's a great discussion to have. I appreciate the letter and look forward to future conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzo. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting "aye" of the motion carries. Next is a letter from the Law Department regarding request for executive session to discuss pending court action.
Dear members of council, I write to ask that the council consider holding an executive session at its regularly scheduled meeting this Tuesday, July 11th, 2017, as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G3, so that I may confer with the council concerning disputes involving the council that are subject of pending court action. If you have any questions or comments about this request, please feel free to contact the Law Department. Sincerely, Keith D. Moore, Law Director.
Mr. Bonzo?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we receive and file the letter, and that we go into executive session to allow the Law Department to confer with council concerning disputes involving the council that are subject of pending court action. If you have any questions or comments about this request, please feel free to contact the Law Department. Sincerely, Keith D. Moore, Law Director.
Mr. Bonzo?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we receive and file the letter, and that we go into executive session to allow the Law Department to confer with council concerning disputes involving the council that are subject of pending court action.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting "aye" of the motion carries. Next is a letter from the Law Department regarding request for executive session to discuss pending court action.
Dear members of council, I write to ask that the council consider holding an executive session at its regularly scheduled meeting this Tuesday, July 11th, 2017, as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G3, so that I may confer with the council concerning disputes involving the council that are subject of pending court action. If you have any questions or comments about this request, please feel free to contact the Law Department. Sincerely, Keith D. Moore, Law Director.
Mr. Bonzo?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we receive and file the letter, and that we go into executive session to allow the Law Department to confer with council concerning disputes involving the council that are subject of pending court action.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting "aye" of the motion carries. We will move into executive session. We will not do anything else when we come out of executive session, when we come back into regular session. I do want to say that traditionally, we will not have our second meeting in July, as that will be the night of the Norwood Day Parade. So our next regularly scheduled council meeting will be on August the 8th. So if we turn the TV cameras off and the microphones off, and if people will exit the chambers and close the door. Okay, we are out of executive session and back in regular session. The only action we need to take is to excuse the absent member. Mr. Bonzo?
I move that we excuse the absent member.
Seconded by Mrs. Stickley, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting "aye" of the motion carries. Mr. Clark?
Would that be adjourned?
Seconded by Mrs. Stickley, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting "aye" of the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.